Good morning, everyone. Today's Monday, June 21st, 2021. The time is 11:00 a.m. This is our weekly Commissioner's Status Update. Attending our Commissioners Duncan and Phillyos. Commissioner Bill Brooks is excused. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I think that we are not going to address number five.
That is correct. So number, item number five is stricken. And so we'll move on with our first item. And that would be a request for an ordinance change for the Post Falls Dam by Avista. Todd, would you take it away, sir?
Yeah, thank you. So if you are following along with the handout, first item, I wanted to just remind everybody why we're here. Terrible event happened April, I think it was April 4th or 24th, 1989. A couple of grandfathers and their grandsons pushed off the boat launch dock right at Camillon Park in Post Falls, which is just right above the South Channel Dam. And unfortunately, the boat wouldn't start. Some terrible things led up to this. It may have been part of it, but they were swept through the dam. And three of the four passengers died. Only one survived. One of the grandsons survived. And it's just a horrible tragedy. And we relive it, it seems like daily, especially in the summer when we see people out there recreating. That actually started our, what we call the Hydro Public Safety Plan. It actually was another reason that City Post Falls and Cootney County began an ordinance prohibiting use on the water above the dams downstream from the Spokane Street Bridge. So there is currently an ordinance. This one that we're going to propose to you today just contrasts that, makes it a little bit more descriptive, a little bit more restrictive for recreators in the area. So that, that's just a brief history of why we're, you know, so concerned. We never want that to happen again. We don't want to lose any more lives. We don't want anybody to get hurt. And then moving on to page three, increase use and access opportunities.
Yeah.
So here we are, all the folks out wanting to recreate. It seems like it's become tenfold from years past. I think another part that has brought a lot more population and activity around the, our facility at Post Falls is the community forest, which is the 500 acres just west of the property. It has two miles of shoreline. And I believe approximately 21 miles of trails. It's a great public recreation space, but it also exposes our facility in signage. Even though we have signage and there's lots of information for folks to know what's, you know, safe and what's not, there's been a pretty blatant disregard for the signage that's there. We also list here as desensitation to the alarms and warnings that we have there. They're in place. We have cameras. And it's probably how many times a year that we have to sound the alarm system?
I think we hit maybe 30 times last year alone. So it's kind of becoming a cry wolf syndrome where the, just a little bit of a, you know, ignoring the severity of the warnings and knowing that there's not going to be consequences, I guess, if you will.
And part of the reason why we're here today and we'll talk about the city of Post Falls, we have a meeting with them, I believe, next week or the week after. We're still trying to coordinate that, is the difficulty with enforcement. As you can imagine, it's a little bit more remote. There might, it might not be on a priority list, the highest thing. But I think with what we tell you today, hopefully it becomes apparent how much of a safety concern this is for us.
I'm sorry, Todd, speaking of safety and Post Falls on this, can we get a copy of this to the sheriff who is sitting behind you so he can follow along?
Oh, you don't have a copy? Okay.
And, and we got one up here for, you want to give Bill's, so she can borrow.
Who needs it? Madison?
So for folks that are following along, if you go to page four, this is where we get some of the documentation of the public safety concerns. We have description of when these took place and also to give you more of a context of where they actually swam to. So the picture on page four shows how far up two swimmers. We actually have this on video, but for today's, today's purposes, we just gave you still pictures. If you look to the right, that's how far they had swum up the, the channel. And it's just, it makes me shiver a little bit, to be quite honest with you. There, we have a library of pictures like this, but we had today chosen just a few to give you guys a sense of what that is. If you flip over to the next page, we have the gentleman who's tagging along the area. And Mac, you know the space better if you want to just.
Yes, this is the South Channel Dam. Some, some of the locals, I think, refer to it as the third channel. But it's the one over by Camillon Park where the actual fatalities occurred in 89. You can see the person spraying painting the downstream side of the dam. And obviously the spillway gates were closed when he was in there doing this. But you can see what it looks like when it's open. And if, you know, in a, in an emergency, if we had to open up those spillway gates, there's no chance of survival. Not only are the, all the channels really steep and, and they don't have very good egress, it's going to fill really fast. We don't expect that we would have to do that. The odds of that are very remote. These aren't areas where we want anybody playing, you know, let alone vandalizing our facility. But that just kind of illustrates how, how the two contrasts of a dam with the gates closed and then with it open. They're adding about probably 3,000 or 4,000 CFs cubic feet of water per second, almost instantly. So very, very dangerous situation.
And then the next page, this was more recent, just last week, a gentleman had climbed up the, the bridge barrier. While climbing up, if he were to happen to slip, he would fall on rocks or concrete. He did happen to make it over to the driving deck. One of our operations folks came out to the, this is gated and closed and plenty of signs. As he approached him just to have a verbal conversation, he jumped into the, into the water that day. So this is just last week. Last one, I think we're getting a point across here. If you look closely at the picture to the right, you, that's not a photo problem. Those are two ropes that are hanging from the bridge that were installed for rope swings. So again, puts our crews at risk to then go and remove those ropes from the hanging bridge, which is all off limits and trespassing there.
One thing real quick, I'll add on that one. Before we were able to get those removed, I think a young teenager was using those rope swings and actually slipped and fell and broke their collarbone. You know, so just, it shows that, that the lack of, of public safety, you know, just kind of thrown to the wind, right?
And then the next page has a map. And this gives, again, just a little bit more idea of just the sheer size and volume. We have the community forest in there. It shows the, the middle north and south channel dams. It also gives you a graph, the legend, shows where we would like to close facilities. In a sense, some of these are closed with signs, barbed wire and chains, but they don't abide by those. So we're trying to get a little bit more strict along there. So again, I don't know that we need to, we certainly can answer questions on any of this. But I think really they reduce, if you want to talk about the reduced penalty for violation.
Well, one, one thing to point out on the map, the area where it's the larger hatching, the white hatching up by the Spokane Street Bridge, down to our voter safety cables, that's really where the current ordinance that the county has and city for that matter has restricted seasonal restrictions. So you can't go out on the, when the signs are posted and, and the area is closed. And now the new area where we're proposing is the, the black hatched downstream. And it talks more specifically about it in the proposed verbiage and the ordinance itself. But one of the, the biggest things, and I did talk with Sergeant Brian Miller about this particular item is we would really like to see, just for the sake of ability, I don't want to speak for the sheriff's office, obviously with the sheriff here. But I, I think the ability to have reciprocity, to be able to have the county deputies enforce a city code, for example, and the city officers to be able to enforce the county ordinance would, would make sense to me. I was in law enforcement for about 13 years before I came to Avista. And the other part of this was a reduction of penalty from a criminal citation to like a notice of infraction, make it a more of a civil matter. I think that would just lend to the, you know, what we're seeing as operators, as Avista staff, what we're seeing as perceived violations, that ability for them to, to go out, respond, use their discretion, you know, have a contact and, and not let, you know, laws and things like that get in their way of just being able to make a public safety contact. And if they had to ride a ticket, let's not make a 17-year-old a criminal for, for swimming in these areas. Yes, it's dangerous, but I don't think that level of crime meets, meets that penalty. My, my opinion.
Sure.
More technically, on the next page, operational scenarios. These are some of the circumstances in which some bad things could happen. Especially here we are, warm weather. The water flows are obviously lower, but that also brings folks out to recreate basically 360 around the entire facility. We can talk about these, but I think you get a sense by just reading the bullet points that we won't have to go into those unless you have specific questions on those. And then lastly, we're, the next steps. This is the first introduction. I know the ordinance was presented probably three, four, five weeks ago. We will work with the city of Post Falls in the next two to three weeks to also discuss the proposed ordinance change. And we're open to any questions that folks might have.
Leslie, any questions?
Well, you talk about reciprocity, but if we have an ordinance and Post Falls has an ordinance, I don't know that we need reciprocity.
Good question. Yeah, maybe better clarification would be that the verbiage in both would almost mirror each other. And so there wasn't this, oh, well, they were outside of city prop, proper, but a deputy is trying to enforce it within the city limits or, you know. In other words, if the, if the laws themselves were codified very similarly, I think that would help. Currently, there's just a few words that are different and it's become a little bit of an issue as to, you know, which agency can enforce what's, and it just winds up being a little bit cumbersome, frankly.
Sure.
Yeah. But yeah, your, your clarification.
Robert Norris, Sheriff, can you hear me? So I think how that can be resolved is an MOU. Generally, we're kind of walking in some of those waters with other city agents, city municipalities. So an MOU generally which would give us the county to do city, city to county. So that's an MOU would resolve that.
Okay.
I do have a question, though. Reduce penalty for violation. So we put our people at risk, you know, to go out there for a rescue and what have you. Kind of explain what your thoughts are on a reduced penalty for?
Well, I guess the, to answer that. So a lot of the, what we consider to be perceived violations by our operators are, you know, 16, 17-year-old kids swimming in dangerous areas. And I, again, I don't want to speak for the sheriff's office, City PD and either prosecuting attorney, but the, the current penalty for the ordinance, a violation of the ordinance is a misdemeanor crime. And it, I get, just get the general feeling that, based on preponderance of the evidence and what you, you would see as this violation. So somebody swimming up by the dam feels like the, the chance for prosecution in that, to, to prove that they're committing a crime, a misdemeanor crime, or it just didn't, didn't seem quite to that level. But that, again, is only my opinion. Whereas like a ticket, a notice of infraction, if you will, that, okay, that may be a little easier to prove and, and maybe the courts would, would be more open to pursuing that, but.
Okay, I, I see where you're going. Would Avista consider a contract with the sheriff's office or Post Falls for an emphasis patrol?
So glad you.
We're pretty thin, we're pretty, you know.
Yeah. Thank you, Sheriff. Yeah, I'm so glad you asked that question because one, one plan would be is moving forward if these laws were codified, that we would like to work directly with the sheriff's office and, you know, offer some, some contract for extra policing, proactive policing, you know, where Avista would pay, you know, a set amount of hours, you know, on overtime or however you, your guild or however you handle that, to go out and make the public aware of the new laws, you know, if they have to enforce them, absolutely. Yeah, yes, sir.
I like where you're going with it.
Sorry, this is probably with noting too, on a Monday afternoon at 4 o'clock when the temperature finally got warm enough, there were, what were counted, 11 to 13 violations, just in a two-hour period. So the volume needs to be understood. It's, it's, it's starting to get overrun. It's serious. So, thank you.
So then I would also say, I, I would support the infraction over misdemeanor to a point. Third violation is, should be then handled more seriously. And I think we already have some waterways issues that are handled that way. Infraction, infraction, misdemeanor for the same violation. So. I did make some notes on the proposed ordinance. So hang on here. I want to make sure that they're all, that you guys addressed them. Yep, you answered all my questions.
Anyone else? Sheriff, you okay? Okay. I'm fine. Nancy, how many are on the line? Five folks? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
I don't think we put it as an action item, so.
Did we not?
We did not.
Oh, it's discussion.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and forward this to legal.
For review?
For review. And then it'll be brought forth to a business meeting at 2 o'clock. You'll get notified of that.
Yeah. So legal hasn't reviewed this yet, reviewed this yet. Okay. We can do that. Gentlemen, I don't have a problem with it. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Good bet. Okay, second item. They're all discussion today. Okay. Which typically is the case anyway. Okay. Assessor letter to Idaho Parks and Rec requesting assistance. Leslie?
So I think Bayla can talk to this a little bit. I don't know that he's had time to draft a letter yet. But just to remind folks that Idaho Parks and Rec started selling their own passes and that alleviated a lot of pressure for motor vehicle licensing. Now they're asking motor vehicle licensing to take it back over. And we do not have the staff or assessor does not have the staff to do that effectively. So we, I would like to partner with the assessor and ask Idaho Parks and Recreation to maybe submit some funding to the county so we could employ more people, so we could take this back over for them.
Yeah, just pull it over.
That, well, actually, that one, you can just leave it there. Yeah.
Commissioners, yes, exactly as Leslie summarized. Last year, my understanding is before I became, I came the assessor for Cootney County sometime in, in April, the Idaho Parks and Rec, Idaho State Parks and Rec Department, as well as the Idaho Transportation Department, they had an amicable separation in terms of the system. They used, both used the RMS system. It's been 10 years in the making. They developed their own new systems. Parks and Rec made a decision to withdraw or pull their, their ability to sell stickers from the counties statewide. They, they, they pulled that back. Since Cootney County is the recreation mecca of Idaho, we sell by far and away, there are more boats, RVs, recreational equipment up here. They've asked that we partner again with them. I don't know what kind of an impact it's going to be to our department. My staff tells me it's, it's, at the peak of the season, it's, it's substantial. I have already put in a request to the Parks and Rec Department asking for funding and support. I did receive a letter response or an email response I'd like to share with the board. And the response was in the negative, highlighted right there in front of you. However, during, not too long ago, when I spoke with Nick Snyder, the Cootney County Parks and Rec Director, he mentioned to me that he had had a conversation with the Idaho State Parks and Rec Department. And he was of the opinion that they were open to that. I will tell you that the email that I just handed to you dates after the conversation I had with Nick Snyder. I, I believe it would be at least worth a try to come back to the Idaho State Parks and Rec Department with a memo or a letter from the county, including the Board of County Commissioners, asking for those resources. I do know it will be an impact. And with all the battles that we've had to face this year with just titling vehicles alone, I just, I'm a little apprehensive to take that on as a role. I think we would want to have more manpower, more, more laborers to work together in both the Post Falls and Idaho office, excuse me, Coeur d'Alene office. And therefore I would be asking the Idaho State Parks and Rec for, to support that.
Okay. Which they've already indicated.
Right.
They're not, they're unwilling to do.
Right.
Well, there's a lot of people over there. So maybe we write to the board and not just the people there.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah. So if you wanted to draft a letter, I'd be happy to look at it and, and.
Do it.
Partner with you in that request. So.
Does it, fundamentally, does it make sense to you? If they provide the manpower, does it make sense?
I think it does for the community. I mean, people are coming here. They're, they're titling their, their, their vehicles anyway. While they're here, they want to get stickers, decals for their, for their recreational equipment. It, it makes sense. Whether or not we have the resources, that's, that's the question.
What happens to the revenue split?
Excuse me, the revenue split?
Yeah. If they're, if they're titling their OHV.
We have a fee, just like we have an admin fee for vehicle, there's one for Parks and Rec. It, it's not significant. I don't know that, I, I would have to look into it to see whether the board has discretion to raise that or adjust that. I don't know. That's a different statute. I think it might be referenced in, in the beginning of that email thread, which I don't know.
Yeah, actually, my question, you know, more to the point was that if you take, if you take this on, does the revenue split change?
I, I don't know that there's a question of revenue, revenue split changing. I mean, there's a fee, there's, there, I'm going to call it an admin fee.
Go ahead.
Which I believe is set, I'm not sure if it's set by statute or if the Board of County Commissioners has authority to set it. I believe it's set by statute. I may be speaking out of turn. But to the extent that it's something that's discretionary, that the board can adjust, I would, I would venture to say that maybe we take a look at adjusting it. But I, I can't say that, I've not researched that.
And I suspect you're right. I think it's statute, but I, I'm not sure. Okay. Anything else?
No. So I think we can, if we're in agreement, then we can have the letter circulated for signature.
Absolutely.
And do that.
I'll plan to get that done by the end of this week.
Great. Thanks, Bayla. Item number three, Forest Legacy Program.
Yes. So we've each had a presentation on what the Department of Lands and the Public Trust and, oh, who's that other?
Land Bank? No. I think you mentioned.
The private company.
Stimson?
But I don't think it's Stimson. Inland Empire.
Inland Empire, okay.
Yeah. Okay. So Inland Empire Paper would like to apply for a Forest Legacy Program. And they ask for the commissioner's support. Doesn't require any funding or anything like that. And I would be in support of the project. It's funding to conserve approximately 18,000 acres of the Idaho Empire Paper Company's lands, which means it will forever be managed, so forested for products and replenished.
In perpetuity. Okay. So they're looking for a letter?
Yes. And we do have a sample letter that staff has already signed, or not signed, they've put on letterhead. So all we need to do is agree to sign it.
Cool. I'm fine.
Me too.
Okay. Item number four, negotiation and update of law enforcement services with the city of Hayden. Sheriff Norris, please.
Yes, sir. And Robert Norris to approach. This is a formality based on our current contract. Both parties are, are not necessarily in compliance based on some old language and population increases and what have you. So we are currently speaking with the city manager and leadership for the city of Hayden to provide law enforcement services commensurate with their population. So I'm hopeful that we can come up with some sort of a long-term action plan, but this is just merely a formality. action plan, but this is just merely a formality because the contract ends in about 70 days, and we have to make sure that we put some updated language in the contract, so.
What are your thoughts?
Well, um-
The demand is far greater than the cost of the supply, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that we can come up with a resolution.
This is coming before us in a business meeting to sign officially, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so just a formality. This situation didn't occur overnight. It occurred over a period of years, so I would encourage the Commissioners to consider a resolution that will resolve the law enforcement plan over a period of years. It's not likely going to happen in one year that they're going to have a contract of one point, you know, $2 million to be able to police their city.
So what's coming before us at a business meeting?
Well, we're going to have to formally update the contract-
Okay.
And I can, we can only do that per the language 60 days prior to the-
Okay.
End of the contract and-
Fair enough. What about cost? Is it going to address cost?
No, no, we're merely just wanting to start a dialogue with them to have some sort of a law enforcement agency contract-
Okay.
To properly police their city.
Got it.
So it probably will not, no.
Okay. Leslie, any questions?
Nope.
We just, do we have a date we can put it on a business meeting?
Um, next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought I already saw something-
Well, it was brought up in conversation on another subject about a week ago, so I know we kind of duplicated our conversation on it, but it was not part of a, it was an overreaching subject last week, but it got brought up.
So it needs to be within 60 days, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so six, next, June 30th would be okay?
We're okay then? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, so item five is stricken. Moving on to item six, Idaho Association of Counties, excuse me, IAC Clerks and Commissioners Spring Conference, which was held two weeks ago. We hosted it up here. We have 44 counties. I think all were represented in some form or another, and it was, they were represented by one or more county commissioners and of course clerks. I took quite a few notes, and I'll just try to hit the highlights for the benefit of anybody listening.
So my question to you, Chris, is, do we even want to have this discussion without Bill being here? Because I was there too, so if you want him to know, I guess he could just watch the meeting, but if he had any questions-
Yeah, you know, I was thinking the same thing upfront, but we've got, well, how many, five people on, Nancy?
Seven.
Seven, yeah, we can do it.
Okay.
We can do it. And I can, and he can listen in if he wants. Okay, so I'll try to summarize it. I'm probably not going to hit on everything, but I'll touch first on the ARPA funds, and we do have a committee to address the application of these funds, what's legal, what can be done and what can't. But essentially, and I know, Dina, you were there, Leslie was there, as was I, and so they basically identified, and the gentleman that spoke to this was from NACO, which is the National Association of Counties, and he spoke to the application of funds in six different categories: public health response, replacing public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, and broadband infrastructure. He focused more on some than others. Some of them might be more difficult, but in any case, the ones that I think are probably most appropriate is COVID-19-related mitigation and containment, the rebuilding of public sector with, to pre-pandemic levels, support of small businesses, especially, and for counties, I guess, they stressed possible application of these funds where face-to-face settings, excuse me, face-to-face settings had to be compromised, and he went into some of the more specific parameters. The other thing that was particularly interesting, and one of our people, and I think it was Jelena who was there, asked if some of this money could be used for the fairgrounds. Now, I'm not going to go into the specifics, but it turns out that what was an impediment for the use of these funds under the CARES Act, because they're a county component, actually potentially works to their benefit here because they are a county component. And so that's something I think folks would be interested in hearing. So much for the ARPA. There was discussion, actually, early on, on, by ICrimp that focused on liability and specifically with regard to law enforcement, and it was rather fascinating. They brought up specific cases that occurred in different counties. The one in particular that struck me was a situation, and I won't mention the county, but it was one of the counties, and there was an individual who, an inmate presumably suffering from mental health, and the individual was essentially crying for help, and as it turns out, and as the situation unfolded, was essentially ignored. Or maybe the deputy simply didn't understand what the problem was. In any case, he died, and that was an out-of-court settlement to the tune of, I believe, was it 2.1 million? So the point being is, no, no, I spoke with Tim afterwards, yeah, and I think it was somewhere between 2.1 and 2.4. So the point being that the greatest liability that the county has typically, any counties in general, is in the, typically in the area of law enforcement, followed closely by wrongful terminations of any type, but, and within the area of law enforcement, it tends to be more on the detention than on the patrol side, as you might expect. So basically, take heed, follow the rules, get the training, and do what's necessary. The other thing that I comment on is in the area of advanced planning and zoning, and that presentation was given by Jerry Mason, who is considered one of the experts in the area of land use. He's a retired attorney, and it was fascinating listening to him. What's fascinating is when he went through situations with regard to when is a public hearing required and whatnot. What's interesting is when you look at the Land Use Act in the state of Idaho, certain applications, zone changes, requests for subdivisions and whatnot, are essentially covered under the Land Use Act and demand typically a public hearing. Not so with just about everything else we do, not necessarily even requiring public comment. Now, in this county, we do this routinely, and sometimes we even conduct public hearings where it's not necessar, not necessary, but basically going the extra mile. What I also thought was interesting is when he went into the situation with the question of sovereignty, and when we talk about sovereignty, specifically with regard to counties versus states, and what's interesting is that in the state of Idaho, we have the doctrine of what we call separate sovereignty, which essentially is a shared sovereignty. So the cities have sovereignty within their jurisdiction, we have sovereignty within our jurisdiction. Ultimately, if there is a conflict, only the county has final jurisdiction, but I don't think we've encountered that problem in this county yet. Hopefully, we won't. What's interesting too is when he, when he went into the question of moratoriums, as in building moratoriums, and there are actually three different types. The one that we, I think, most commonly refer to is the one which is considered an emergency moratorium, and that has a limit of 182 days, and we have to demonstrate or indicate immediate harm, which is the one that we most often hear discussed. But there are two other types of moratoriums permitted by state law. One of them is what is referred to as an interim. That does require public hearing, and that can go up to one year. But once again, you've got to have a public hearing. And then there's what was referred to as a regular moratorium, which is also permitted by Idaho Code, and he said in that case, we have to refer to our policies. And he went into the question of the comprehensive plan versus the ordinances, when zone changes are acceptable. What he did indicate, which was interesting, is that a zone change, so if we get an appellant, an individual who comes before us, who let's say wants to go in for higher density, which would be a zone change, must not be in conflict with the complen, excuse me, comprehensive plan or the policies in the plan. And in the final analysis, where to act on public health and safety. And a number of other items were covered too. Leslie, did you want to jump in on anything?
Sure, I'll stick with land use and I'll go back to ARPA and stuff.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So, uh-oh.
Bless you.
Allergies have finally hit me this season. It's, he stressed, be careful to stay higher level and not be bureaucratic, when he was talking about land use things in general and CUPs used as a zoning mechanism. So I think that's important to remember going forward. Yeah, I think that you covered most of that. Back to the ARPA-
Yes.
They wanted, he stressed two things. He stressed, don't be in a rush to spend the money because guidance is changing, and then the second thing that he stressed was that the Congress is already trying to claw back ARPA money, and so that was another reason why to take your time and don't run out and write a bunch of checks that may not be covered if they decide to change things. So having our team in place to thoroughly vet every request and to make sure that we are leaving enough time for this to straighten out on the federal level, I think is important. The thing that I understood, and maybe Dina can speak to this because she was there, regarding the fairgrounds, because they're looking at the county as a whole, if the county revenue did not suffer as a whole, even though the fairgrounds revenue did, then they may not be eligible separately.
So, Dina Darrow, for the record, that is a question that was raised in our ARPA meeting last week, so we'll be discussing that tomorrow. We reached out to our auditors, Ida Bailey, and they said that since the fair is not a blended unit, they are separate unit-
Oh, I see.
Separate calendar, separate financials. From a revenue standpoint, we give them an amount every year to pay for the fair, and that was not withheld. So when we did our revenue calculation, that was included. That's their revenue that we gave them. So there are other options and there are other grants, so we're digging into that now. There is a grant, a federal grant for vendors that lost revenue, performing arts places, venues where there's events venues and things like that. So there are other areas. So we're digging more into the component unit aspect of it. Ida Bailey is going to add that to their questions to pose to the Treasury, but right now, they have not received a question like this, so we're getting further information and just seeking out other options for the fair.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think that was it. You know, like you said, training, training, training in the aspect of law enforcement, and ICrimp is offering, Chad's offering his services to come and train whatever we want or need. So he's willing to do that. So I suppose that's-
Sheriff, you've taken advantage of that, haven't you? The training for ICrimp?
I've been a little busy.
I know he's been up here anyway.
Actually starting to feel a bit of a rhythm, and we have reached out to them on several subjects, and I look forward to seeing what their training portfolio is and take advantage of that.
Okay, cool. Anything else on that topic? Okay, then, moving on to our status update of pending items. Facilities expansion, Leslie?
Two more days. We will meet with LCA for the Long Range Plan. It is just a commissioner workshop, and so they're just going to give us a couple different options of what they looked at for the future of housing or office space for our employees.
Okay. Pack airport lease, nothing?
Bill took that over, so.
Okay. Financial snapshot, not due till next month?
Right.
Thank you, Dina. Ballot bond language, are we on hold?
We are, essentially because with the, now the ARPA funds, we can actually probably take this item off until the situation with ARPA is discovered, you know, we'll know more about the Long Range Plan-
I'm fine with that.
And all that.
Yeah, let's remove it.
Yeah, and I would even say same thing for building financing. We can always add it back on when we decide which direction we're going.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, impact fee analysis. Bill tried contacting Chris Way for Cootney Fire and Rescue, but they're already working with Galena Consulting to try and do this. I also gave him a contact because I spoke to NIBCA, that's the North Idaho Builders and Contractors Association last week, and they asked about this, and one of the gentlemen, I referred to Bill, so Bill is going to hopefully start working with them. The builders apparently have no issue with impact fees, and in fact, I think they're actually looking upon them quite favorably, so, as are a lot of other groups, and that's where we are with that, but no substantial progress to speak of just yet.
Okay, so then, so I want to make sure that we keep these two things separate. So the first one, impact fee analysis, that is Cootney County itself charging it.
That's Cootney County, that is correct.
Yeah, so then the next item is actually for the fire department-
Yes.
And I looked at the legal log, and they do not have a copy of the resolution yet, and I did speak to Chris Way because I found one item in the resolution that I think he should be aware of, and if it's, needs to be corrected or not, and he should get back to me this week.
Okay, good.
And so otherwise, I can, I guess, we can talk to Bill today to find out when he's sending it to legal, because they really got to get on the ball. They already have names and-
So he must have gotten something from Chris then, is that it?
I have no idea what he talked to Chris about. I just read it, and I just saw something in there that I brought to Chief Way's attention, and he said he was going to check it out.
And Bill will be in later. He'll be in for the, this afternoon's meeting, budget meeting.
Okay.
So that's it for pending item status. Anything else? Public comment?
I would just like to add, Robert Norris, Sheriff, that I agree with what the chairman said about risk in the jail as it pertains to deaths. So there's a rule of thumb when it comes to jails. You don't want three things: escapes, suicides, and death. So I would agree with what your assessment is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, so the time is 11:44. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.